Call this meeting to order and welcome, everybody. We excuse Carrie, as most everyone knows, her mother passed away, so I believe she's in Idaho attending to family arrangements for that. Okay, jumping right into it, item number one, is Chris here?
He's on.
Yes. Chris, can you hear us?
Yep.
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great. So, item number one, 2022 amended fiscal year budget. We'll start with that. Anybody here have any comments concerning the 2022 fiscal year budget? Okay. Item two, 2023 proposed fiscal year budget. Okay, moving along. Now, onto the work session. Sherry, oh, you're here on her behalf, okay.
I'm the designated presenter.
Okay, so, yeah, we are going to hear from the PTR committee, and John is going to be giving us a little bit of ideas to what their recommendations are concerning trail usage and classification and figuring the switchbacks. And so, John, when I talked this over with Sherry, I mean, we designated 20 minutes, I just asked that you keep it at that or less, so.
I have no problem.
And that was a discussion.
I'm trying to honor that, yeah.
Very good.
So, two things, I do have the survey that was taken, that everybody has been so concerned about, so I'm gonna give that up to you guys tonight. Part of the delay in that, just for your information, was when the survey was being built, our executive committee had a little bit of feedback, and then the cart kind of got ahead of the horse, and the survey got out before we finalized it. So, that was part of why we delayed putting it out, and then we were trying to look if there was some way we could go back and put the parameters in that we were trying to get in originally. And then, the last couple of months, we haven't had an executive quorum of the executive committee to be able to move forward. We finally got that last week, so I'm not sure if we're funding it forward, but, so, we weren't trying to rewrite it, we weren't trying to hide details. I don't get on social media, but I hear all sorts of things floating out about it. Nothing fishy was going on, it was just trying to figure out if there was a way we could back it up, and, anyway, so.
I've never heard anything fishy going on in social media.
I don't look at it.
They would have gone to Woodland Hills.
Yeah, I would have put my time into more productive things.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, smart choice. Try to do better.
I do not do Facebook.
What was your picture out there over there?
Yeah, I know, I saw that yesterday.
Thank you, sir.
So, with that, my Brad's here tonight, Brad's on the committee, him, as of last week, Brad and Sherry are co-chairs of the committee. I felt like we had a great meeting last week, right, Janet and Ben?
We got locked down.
Yeah, very, I left that smiling, I entered that meeting not sure where it was gonna go, and left that meeting with a big smile on my face, and I think all of us felt pretty good about where it went, so. So, here are our recommendations. And then, we're gonna explain why.
It's a happy compromise.
Yeah, actually, in fact, for your information, the five executive members on the committee were not all in one court or another. It's not like we're all, you know, far, we're all from different spectrums, as far as how we think she thinks should move forward, which I think is a good representation. We got two committee members from Summit Creek, and then three just from the regular section, I don't know what you call it. But I thought we got some good representation, both of geographic, as well as how we view things. Some of us may be a little bit more restrictive, some a little bit more, so I feel like we've got a good mix of that committee as we have worked this through, so maybe that. So, here's our recommendations, and then, I didn't want to give you the survey before tonight, because I think you would have got locked into it too much, now you can go back and look at it after, and I think our presentation will probably make some sense of that. But here's what we would recommend. As far as switchback trail usage, with consideration to the existing trail width and switchback corner radius, it's tight, those of you that go up there, it's tight corners. Our recommendation is that we limit the general trail use of using vehicles of a maximum width of 50 inches. Now, that could maybe be discussed, but that is a common width that allows for motorized use without getting things too big up there that shouldn't be up there. And then, a suggestion on that is that the limitation we posted at the bottom, where the current signage is, and that we put some bollards in there at that 50-inch width, which would help solve that concern, as far as if you can't get through, you shouldn't go up it. So, motorized would still be present, it would just limit the size of the vehicles that would be able to go up there. Number two, and this is something that's gonna be in conjunction with everything else, we're recommending that the trail be closed between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Now, the reason why that is, is if you look at the second page, you'll see a red light sign there. It says, "Park closed, end of the top drive," that's our sign at our park, okay? And I know some of our ordinances out there, I think, are 10:30 and 7:00, and 11:00 and 6:00. A suggestion we would make is that you guys codify that, and have some continuity in whatever that time is. So, whether it's 10:30 to 7:00, or 11:00 to 6:00, I would just suggest that tie the park with the trail, and your noise ordinance, whatever that is. But that would be just to motorize the vehicles there, just so it's not a nuisance to those that live by it. Non-motorized use, they could, you know, use it 24/7, whatever they want to do there. And that also would run in conjunction with certain things we have in existence now, like on some of the cold sections, there's no parking after dark, again, just trying to limit that type of usage there. If you look at the back, these are some signs that Brad and I have taken pictures of. Brad's out and about, I'm about, I was in Price earlier today mountain biking in Spanish Fort just now, that's why I'm still learning this. These are some common signs that I see on a lot of trails all over the Wasatch Front. You can see the Trail Courtesy Triangle there, I don't know if you're familiar with that? That's pretty common, as far as who yields to who on trails, multi-use trail. Dog waste, I'm seeing more and more of that stuff going up. There's more and more signs about muddy, you know, if it's sticking to your heels and wheels, turn around. You'll see there's two or three signs there that talk about that, just as far as, you know, not tearing them up. You can see the Payson City one there, where they've got certain things that they're limiting there. That one that's underneath the Trail Courtesy there, that Payson City, that's over in the For Bay, those signs just went up last fall. The trail network over there is a combination of private property, Payson City property, and US Forests property. These signs Payson has posted on their portion of the trails. So, that, they don't have these signs on the Forests on this park, but anywhere where there's gates, or fencing, or access in the Payson City part of For Bay, they've put those up as of last fall, so just, you know, gets something there that the sister city's doing. So, anyway, just some general suggestions there on some signage that, again, you could post. Here's a concern that we've had, we've had this discussion as a committee for a year. Enforcement up here lacks on pretty much any ordinances that you guys have, you guys everywhere that, hard parking, or things of that. I've been on some firework calls as a firefighter, where, you know, things do or don't happen. Anyway, part of the suggestion of the sign usage is, it's been my experience, and I think Brad would echo this, if not him, say different, once you kind of establish parameters of trail usage of what's common and courtesy, and most people will work with that. You know, and so, that would help limit any type of enforcement, or anything of that nature. And then, again, like anything, you always get a few people that don't care. But, again, if you could establish whatever the criteria is of what you want, and I think whatever you do on the switchbacks will help set the precedent of what you do on other stuff moving forward, too. So, I think it'd be a good time to start and decide what you want to put on it, so.
I was just gonna comment, most of the people that use the trails, if there's signs, and we talked about this, people that are avid trail users, they respect these signs, and they know. So, hopefully, if we're proactive and have some of these things up, then, you know, we won't have some of the problems.
Now, there's, and again, I, there's probably always like, there's not anything on any of these signs that I think anybody should take offense to, I mean, that's just called the courtesy usage there, as far as, you know, take care of it, don't ruin it, clean up after yourself. This is, I'm a, I'm an extensive trail user, I bike a lot, and I'm all over the state, and even adjacent states. I was in Colorado two different times last month for two days biking. This is pretty common, more and more here in the West, as far as trail usage. And it's just, and it's good for the trails, it prolongs the life of them, and, so.
One thing I would like very much for the committee, and as well as when we discuss this, is I'd like to stop using just the word trails.
Okay.
And instead, kind of differentiate between, you know, the rougher trails, like the switchbacks that are not paved, and then those that we hope will be able to eventually get, which are paved.
So, maybe improved and unimproved?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be fine. Any way we can differentiate, I don't care about the wording as much as I do.
So, to differentiate a little bit on that?
Because I, I think that'll also help the residents, as we are talking about these trails, to understand, you know, what is one type of trail versus what is another one. And, again, my hope is that eventually we'll be able to get trails going up Woodland Hills Drive and down Summit Creek Drive, that would be for bikes and walkers only. And that would be an improved trail, have asphalt and that, etc.
Yeah, yeah, I need to, improve versus unimproved, and most of the courtesy would apply to all of them, but obviously, you're not learning about that on an improved trail, for instance, where you went on something else, yeah. Okay, yeah, I think we could differentiate that moving forward, and in our discussions as we discuss, we'll just like a lot.
Because like you said, I think a lot of the precedent, whatever we decide, is going to apply to all unimproved trails, or all improved trails.
That's fine. So, this presentation tonight is addressing unimproved.
Switchback specifically.
We have some families in the city that are financially committed to their current side-by-sides, and to be honest with you, many of them are over 50 inches.
And that, I think, is something that could be discussed.
Okay, I just wondered.
This is a, this is kind of a dimension that we have seen as common.
I've seen it too, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know that should be factored in. I'm of the mindset that if you're going up there and it's too big, good luck. And, you know, we're 911, Doral and I will come, so.
I was shocked, I had a, I had a friend of mine come up to the city, and he followed me up to the trail, he, he, there were three of us all together, he had a thing that was wider than the Jeep, and I thought, there's no way, and he very successfully navigated the whole thing, and I don't advise that.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, and I don't want to make the trail wider with overuse like that, but I just wondered the committee's opinion on the rigidity of the 50 inches.
Can I speak to that some? So, I have quite a bit of extensive experience on the powersports side of things, it's how I make my living is selling those units. I own one myself as well, that my suggestion would be limiting the use of my own vehicle on that trail. It purely comes down to compromise and the longevity of the trail. That trail is not made for these large wide suspension machines that, I mean, to people that, if you come face-to-face, one vehicle going up and one going down, there's no compromise. I mean, and most of them, their only way around those radiuses is to either do a three, four-point turn, or step on the gas and go drifting around the corners, which obviously isn't safe as well. So, are not what we're trying to attract up there. So, me as a user myself, and as somebody who owns a vehicle like that, I see the value in still limiting it to that. And, again, it was a matter of compromise we're shooting for, because there's a lot of ATV users, there's a lot of people that do have the 50-inch trail width limits, dirt bikes, things of that front, that wouldn't be able to make it up there. And I feel that it's just, instead of it going one way or another, yes or no, no motorized, non-motorized, I feel this is gonna be to the greater good of the most of the community, so.
And again, for longevity of the trail, because, I mean, FYI, in fact, Janet and Reddine are like, tomorrow morning at nine-ish, a handful of us are going up to the switchbacks with Ted, we're looking at the water bars, a few things, see if there, what kind of maintenance we may need to do on that. So, Doral's going with me, a couple of us, Ted, Brad.
We're planning a maintenance day next month, and we'll be gathering some volunteers with Janet to bring the.
Janet will be announcing that. Do you read that?
I'm working on the flyer. We'll be working on the water bars, and just setting the precedent to the trail, and we believe that if we follow that up quickly as well with the signage, that would be a great way to really encourage and set expectations on the trail, when they see that we respect the trail, we take care of our trail, and then we have signs that to match as well the expectations going up front.
So, are all these signs, signs that you anticipate putting up, or?
Not all of them.
No.
These are examples, so, more so, at the, at the bottom there, you can see, based on your guys' recommendation, if you would like us to go into further specific signs that we would recommend, we would happily do so. More so, this is just for more of a general exercise.
Just kind of FYI.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Now, Brad, you've spoken a little bit about, you know, there's certain organizations out there that help potentially with signage?
Definitely, definitely.
Have you had a chance to reach out to them?
I have not yet, unfortunately, last time I saw you, I went to a meeting, and I just got home on Sunday evening, so.
You're good.
But I have been put in touch with quite a few organizations throughout the state that do offer grants, funding, help organize, in any sort of labor, things like that as well, so I'm definitely looking into that stuff to see how, if not just immediately, but also for the long-term use of the trails and future trails, hopefully, we can learn a lot in how to maximize those opportunities moving forward.
And, Doral, I just know, there's, there's a few in the community that really want non-motorized use of the trail.
I know, I know.
And those people are happy with this compromise.
Yeah, well, and all the, I'm on the non, and he's, Brad and I are probably not polar opposites, but we're definitely on different ends of the spectrum here, and yet, we're working fine with this, and we have. And it's not a good or bad, or a, you know, this, that, or the other, it's just trying to find the best common denominator for the community as a whole, so.
Yeah, I mean.
She hit the point there, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, and I mean, to bring more specifically, I think it's fair to say, I mean, Sherry Berger does share a boundary with that trail, so she has a lot more exposure than we do, but I think we can all agree, after yesterday, last week's meeting, she left with a smile on her face as well with the direction that's going.
And I told her aside after, and said, "You're okay with this?" And she said, "Absolutely."
Yeah, this.
That's shocking.
No, it's, I wish, I mean, Ben and Janet were here, you guys can go back and watch it, but, I mean, watching it isn't the same as being here. That was huge.
We got our chair figured out, and we got a direction on the trail, so I think we would be able to.
Yeah, I mean, seriously, we walked away out of there, I was just flabbergasted. We had done more last week than we had in a year. So, just FYI there.
Thank you for that presentation, your efforts, and, you know, the switchbacks are one of the gems of the community, so I appreciate you doing everything to try to preserve them. Two of my kids did Eagle Projects on trail repair on the switchbacks, too, so we're big fans. All right, any other comments from anybody on the council?
Just what's, what do they need to do next to get, if they want to get, see these changes made to the trail?
Well, I would say that you would probably be the person, or Ben would be the person, if you have an ordinance that you want to propose, that captures this vision in a more formal way.
That's what I figured.
And I would recommend that, again, if we're, if we're thinking that these are the kind of restrictions that we want on all non-motorized trails, or motorized trails, or, excuse me, non-improved, non-improved trails, then that's the way it should be written. It shouldn't be written as an ordinance for the switchbacks, it should be for non-improved trails.
I think.
This is what our standards are going to be.
Technically, you can have non-motorized, unimproved, motorized, unimproved, improved. Now, you could have three or four categories.
So, it is very, very common for trail systems to run where they're definitely not motorized while they're running in the same vicinity of a motorized, so, just depending on the west, the standards of the trail, everything on that front, so, you know, when we come up, or when they come up with the verbiage for the ordinance, let's keep that in mind as well, because I gotta imagine in the future, we are gonna probably work towards a single-track type trail that no motorized use would probably be used on likely in this neighborhood, so.
It's more like a hiking or a biking.
Yeah, literally just a bike with trail, you know, so, things like that, I gotta imagine we will explore for the future. I personally would love to see more of those things come in there as well, and I'm a, I'm a very big motorized user, so, but there's a lot of crossover between all the activities on the trails, so it's not uncommon to go to places that have designating, I mean, you could just go to Payson Canyon here, and there, there'll be trails that are equestrian and foot traffic only, and, you know, you'll come across a cross-section where dirt bikes and all motorized are used, so.
In fact, the For Bay, the signs showed there, they've shut down motorized, through the city did, which had been accessible, they've shut that down last fall, which was a surprise, so.
But yet, surrounding stuff too is motorized.
Yeah, but you go up about it, there's plenty of it.
Yeah.
One of the benefits, I think, of these changes is that it would discourage campers, you know, overnight people, hopefully, because fire danger, you worry about those kinds of things up there.
I worry about the fire danger, and I know there's been campfires up there.
Yeah.
One of the signs on here does say, "No camping," and so, most of these places say, they say, "No camping in the area," so, I mean, we can enforce that on our portion of the trail, which obviously you'd need to take to get to DNR line, which has their own set of rules, but I think if just a sign alone, again, setting that expectation, would probably deter a lot of people from attempting to camp there.
Well, then, if we have an ordinance, we can enforce it, too.
Yeah, the Payson one here says, "No firearms or fireworks, no overnight camping, no shooting firearms," so, most of all, be things that we could look at as well, yeah.
We see fire pits up there all the time. It bugs me.
It won't fix everything, but it's.
No, and you can't legislate everything either, you know, but, but you can give some direction.
Yeah, no, and I think that it contemplates a shared use, and that's, that's a sensible approach. Wayne?
Can I suggest, too, that as you get to a point of maybe drafting an ordinance, look at the general plan on trails, and see if that ordinance is going to fit in with that. Now, it's not that that general plan can't be changed or tweaked as well, so we're open to suggestions that you all might have, that maybe we can take a look in a different way at our trails as they are, as the information is included in the general plan, so just kind of keep that in mind as you look forward with this. Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you, and we'll move on from there, then.
Thank you. See you in the morning, Doral.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four, March 2022 check approvals and financials. Anybody have any questions or comments about those?
Not I.
Okay. Janet, Ben?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Checks are usually pretty straightforward.
All right, then we'll move on. Okay, item five, 2022 amended fiscal year budget.
So, this is always hard when we look at those, but could we get Chris to just do a brief overview of what?
Yes, please. I was going to request that. I can see the changes, I mean, it's easy, but why, like, what, obviously.
Maybe you could have a more professional. Jody, can you let me share the screen?
I think you should be able to.
I'm trying, and it says, "I'm not cool enough."
Well, I'll be darned.
Well, that's accurate. Especially since you moved to St. George.
I know.
Hot there.
Yeah, we don't want to share screens, though.
It's my life.
There we go, okay. Well, that's fun. It says, "You're sharing the screen," now I can't.
Yeah, just stop sharing.
There we go, okay. We should see.
No, isn't that impressive?
That's funny, because I was texting Bob earlier about some things, so.
He misses it. He misses it.
Yes.
Come back, Bob.
Overall, we're hitting the year in very, very positive. A couple of the highlights, one, our property tax collection is about, gonna be about $20,000 higher than originally anticipated. Last year, we'd anticipated $770,000, and it looks like we're gonna be just shy of $790,000, so that's a positive right there. Most of our tax collections are looking up compared to what was originally budgeted almost 12 months ago, so that's a positive, that helps. Building permits were up compared to what we'd anticipated, but once again, we just don't know when and who's gonna file at what time, so it's a good best guess. Let's just keep going down, unless there's anything I'm skipping over, please let me know that you'd like to discuss. The next biggest thing that we want to discuss is, we'd originally talked about taking $277,219 out of savings, and at this point, as of today, if the budget's going the way it is, we're gonna actually end up taking zero out. And so, that's a huge factor in the way the expenses have been managed, the revenues have come in, and one big thing that we'll have to talk about here in the end is the transfers, and we'll discuss that here in a second. I do want to bring up the mayor council wages. Typically, that would be $18,000 a year head-on, but there was a point last year when Bob Ottley, there was, there was some conflict with the way that he was doing snow plowing and city council, and the city council pay got bumped off, so I had to pay him back in this fiscal year, so that's why it's up just a little bit this year, to make up for four or five paychecks. But otherwise, everything is pretty stagnant as far as council wages. The employee wages, this is one of your guys' questions on email the other day, and when council originally put this original budget together last May, we'd only had the assistant recorder working maybe for a couple of weeks on top of additional salaries that, raises that were given by the previous mayor to myself, Jody, in this budget line item. So, because we had not opened the budget up since that time, that's why there was a difference in here. And there was some overtime in last, in last calendar year, where Jody was doing a lot with the grammar requests and some of those other items, so that's why that amount is up. And because that amount is up, that obviously raises all the other unemployment benefits fund, and those kind of things. I do want to pause here also and talk about the renumbering structure, to try and make things flow a little bit easier, and just, like it was on email, just trying to keep anything in the 100s to deal with salaries, the 200s to deal with benefits, the 300s to deal with, like, outside contractor-type services, the 400s will deal with the utilities, 500s travel, 600 supplies, 700s deal with, 700s, 800s will deal with debt and capital purchases. Once again, just trying to make this flow a lot smoother in that. Let's get down to the next biggest change that was going to happen. Really, nothing changed in the fire department, nothing changed in the roads department. I do have one concern with the roads department, we have about $200,000 that needs to be spent by June 30th on road repair type stuff, or we need to look at transferring that money from the roads count in this general fund and put it into the capital projects, and I'm not, is Corbin in the room right there?
Yes.
So, Corbin, I don't know if we're gonna be able to spend $200,000 by June 30th, but, so this doesn't get absorbed into the budget, we ought to slide that over into capital projects, so it can be utilized in the next fiscal year.
And, Chris, Corbin and I talked about this a little bit, too, so there was some question as to how exactly that was being allocated, like, there was some question as to whether some of those expenses were already, correct me if I'm wrong on this characterization , Corbin, but some of them might have already been sort of, not spent, but dedicated to
some of them might have already been sort of s- not spent, but dedicated to a specific purpose, so it's not like there's two hundred grand ready to spend, but rather that there might be um some of that already is specifically tasked with a purpose that we really have no further say on.
Right.
Yeah, the only thing that I I know of is there's like thirty or thirty-five grand for crack seal.
But that's, that thirty grand, actually it's like twenty-one something, that's, that's in the, the budget for the tar and then the wages, since we were gonna try to do it, the wages are in salaries and wages. Um, so when I talked before about taking the money for salaries and wages and the money for the tar and putting it together and that's how we've contracted with the guys that are doing the work right now, so I think that two hundred is probably gonna be closer to seventy-five or eighty by the time we're done with the tar, with the patches, the overlay um and all that, all that stuff, I don't think it's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be that high. So Chris, because I know we approved last year um two hundred thousand for West Lofer.
Two twenty.
Two twenty.
Yeah, that's in a different, that's in a different fund and that'll be in a couple minutes, we can talk about that, so that's not reflected in here.
Okay, and with the estimate that we had at the time, I said it that way, cause prices have come up. Um, we were about thirty or forty thousand dollars short of being able to pay for our portion of West Lofer. So if now we're saying we've got two hundred thousand minus whatever we spend on this other stuff, so let's just say we have fifty thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars left, that might make West Lofer doable. Is that what you're hearing?
That, that is one option to do, yes.
Okay. Of course, we probably can't do that by June, but.
Well, but if it's transferred into a capital facilities fund, then we could do, we can, we can carry it over into next year's budget and spend it out of that capital facilities.
Right, that's, that's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, we just have to have it identified, we can't just pop the money in there so we can identify it as Lofer and put it in the roads capital facilities, that extra fifty grand or whatever. You know, Corbin, if you can give me a number, council's gonna need to vote on it tonight, so if you can give me a number, then we can get the council to vote on it, approve the transfer tonight and then I can initiate that.
Let's just say seventy.
Well, I, I don't even know that's, I mean, I would eat their gas, I know Ted's working on Vancon to get Vancon to update that quote, but even at that, we've, we've looked at different options to try to reduce that cost. I mean, for instance, the culvert, to replace that culvert that's under the road that's collapsing, that culvert, Vancon's price at the time was a hundred and ten thousand dollars to dig up that culvert and replace it. The biggest reason for that is because on the low, on the, on the downhill side of West Lofer, that culvert is thirty feet deep, which does, which means you can't just dig it, you, you dig a hole to put the tractor in and then you dig a hole in the hole to get to the bottom of the culvert, and so it's just super labor intensive. And so what we're looking at, what I talked to Ted this morning about, was bailing out on the culverts that's there, filling it up with concrete so it can't collapse anymore, create a sinkhole coming from, you know, working its way to the surface and just install a new culvert at a reasonable depth, maybe twelve to fifteen feet. And then on the downhill side, instead of making that culvert like it is right now, that culvert drops nineteen feet from end to end, there's nineteen feet of elevation difference. Instead of doing that, have that culvert at a five percent slope, which is reasonable, and then on the outlet, it would come out in the middle of that berm on the downhill side. Just do armor, armor that, that surface, rip, riprap, big rocks. So that as the water comes out of that culvert, it doesn't wash away the berm. Now, that's a lot more reasonable than digging a hole that's thirty to thirty-five feet deep.
So I think, I think the um, that's all good and I agree, anyway, that, that sounds really good. I think what Chris is saying is, so we've got this two hundred thousand dollar chunk of change and he needs to know how much you're gonna spend on the crack seal and the wages for crack seal, so then what would be left over? And that leftover number, whatever it is, would then be put onto the West Lofer or it would put, be put into the roads capital improvements fund.
Okay, off the cuff, I would, I would be comfortable saying eighty thousand.
Okay.
And and Chris, if if we need more precision in those numbers, I mean, do we have to pin that down tonight, I mean, cause is there something else that, is there another way we could vote on it?
So anytime, we can put the money in the capital and the roads capital fund targeted for West Lofer, that's easy. Then let's say six months down the road, after we actually do it, we saved forty thousand dollars. We can then take that forty thousand dollars and use it on any other roads capital improvement. We don't have, I mean, just because in our minds we target it towards West Lofer, doesn't mean that that's like writing a check and it's done.
We can just amend it again.
Well, we won't amend it, we just move it, yeah.
And that's really what I'm getting at, is I just wanna make sure that us not being able to accurately anticipate what the potential added expense for finishing West Lofer would be will not derail the vote tonight.
That's why we created the capital funds the way we did. Was we kinda did them around the big priorities that the city has, fire, roads, water, snow, and I can't remember what the other ones, but anyway, we did it that way so that they were in kind of general buckets. So it wasn't like so rigid against a specific project.
Yeah.
Public works is the other one.
Okay.
So.
Good.
Yeah.
So, so Chris, as far as, as far as an uh an excess in that, if if we, if we earmark or if we transfer eighty thousand of the road budget into a capital, a capital fund for West Lofer or for roads in general, and there happens to be a hundred and twenty left over, what happens to the other forty, doesn't it just go back into the general fund and offset legal fees or engineering fees or whatever else?
Yeah, and that, and you're correct, I'm actually gonna make a suggestion here. I think what we ought to do is take the two hundred thousand and move the whole thing over to the roads capital projects and then we can operate the next forty-five, sixty days, well, actually be thirty days or so out of the capital projects for the rest of the, any, any work that's done between now and June thirtieth and then after June thirtieth, that money will still be in that capital projects. And including that extra forty thousand for the Lofer drive or the extra money that might need to be utilized for roads and it doesn't get sucked back up into the general account unless council wants it to and it can be dedicated for roads only.
I, I'm a lot better with that, cause then, then roads doesn't lose any of it.
Yeah.
Okay, but you guys are doing better, I certainly.
I think it should stay in roads.
That's weird, I wanna do it.
I think it should stay in roads, I think that's a good idea.
So the two specific lines I'm looking at is I'm gonna transfer this street capital out, outlay right here for twenty-nine thousand and class C road maintenance for one seventy-one, six hundred, I'll transfer those amounts and this would be amendment to the um, when you guys make the motion or somebody can make that amendment to transfer those two amounts over to the capital projects that uh specifically roads, that would be awesome.
We will, we.
And I can help, help remind you when we get to that point.
It's a twenty-nine thousand and a hundred and seventy-one thousand, that's two hundred thousand, six hundred dollars. Right.
Yep.
I'm just saying, I wanna make sure I know which lines we're talking about.
Yeah.
And so when we do the vote, we'll just, as amended per discussion in the work session, right, we don't need to specify it in the proposed ordinance.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, so as far as rest of the general account, the only other thing I'd like to really discuss is these savings, last year um there was a saving setup for future fire trucks, future ambulance or future medical needs, future snow plowing, future roads and future park things. Talking with Zion's Bank and Chief Northup, um and the mayor and the previous mayor, we had come up with the, the thought that the current residents really should be paying for the current city expenses. So for example, the fire truck, the taxes should cover the fire truck for those that are, that are living there in the city. And talking to Zion's Bank, Zion's Bank's ready to throw as much money at, at us as we really want and I, you know, that, that's kinda scary in a sense, but we want to make sure that, well, it's up to you guys, do you guys want current residents to pay for the current services or do you wanna save money for the future to pay cash for future expenses? Like fire trucks or potentially an ambulance or something like that.
And so one key distinction too, right, Chris, would be one would be, I mean, is one cash and then one is debt financing, basically, is that?
Correct. So, so in this budget we're presenting today is wiping out, transferring any of these funds to those savings accounts, what in, in a sense we're doing is we're taking from savings and putting in savings um by doing that, which that, that's a council decision on that.
So, I don't know, here's, here's my opinion. I understand the concept of, you know, basically taking the money and putting it or having current residents pay for current expenses, okay, I get that, that's, that's a fair concept. The reason that we went down the specific, I'm gonna mention specifically fire, cause the others are kind of small amounts and not really worth talking about, was really what we were trying to do is we were trying to get to a point where we, we know that a fire truck has to be replaced, okay? There, that's, that's not like an unexpected expense, we know that there's a certain life of a fire truck and so it's gonna have to be replaced. So what we were trying to do is.
And that's by rule that we follow, yeah.
Yeah, so we, so we thought, well, then let's prorate that, is really what we were doing. Is let's prorate that expense so that when the time comes, we can, we can replace the fire truck. And we're, and and that literally was doing exactly what Chris is saying of having the residents pay for stuff as we go and instead of having, you know, fifteen years down the road and I'm assuming we get a new fire truck in the next year or whatever, as having a really huge expense or having to put, take on a lease of that new fire truck. And so we were trying to just prorate it. I still really like that idea, I think that's a, a responsible way of doing our finances, um but that's just me.
And I, I think that really is the key distinction, I mean, it, it, you know, cause on the one hand, we're sort of saving up for it and 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 that does present some sound fiscal uh strategies, I believe, but then I, I, that does also cause current residents to shoulder a sizable burden for the benefit of future residents, so and and you know, I mean, for vehicles, financing them through a loan is also a very common practice, so I don't view that as being reckless either, so.
Yeah, it is a common practice, but again, you know, we've also been living with how many years, like almost fifteen years worth of really low interest rates and that's changing.
Yeah.
Rapidly.
So, you know.
And I'm not pushing for either, I mean, it's, it's your call, I, I, but I, to me, there was, I, I thought that if we did finance it, that that did seem fairly sensible too. You know, I, I don't think that it's, I'm just saying, I don't think it's fiscally irresponsible to, to finance it and I think that there is kind of a shared equitable sort of a, you know, shouldering of the, the, the cost of it too by doing it that way.
So it's kind of buying the future truck now or paying for the truck we have now, right? Um, so saving up for a truck in the future. Yeah, but keep, well, so even at fifty thousand dollars and let's assume fifty thousand dollars next year, we were still gonna get a loan, so we weren't covering the whole thing, we were just covering some of it by doing it this way. Yeah, it's a, it's a risk mitigation, right?
Yeah.
It's how much risk are we willing to take, because it's the difference of if I buy a new truck right now at, you know, zero down, fully leveraged and something happens to it, now I'm upside down with a vehicle and I don't, right, versus flipping the other way, if we save up, we're dropping more on the front end and then if something happens, we're not stuck with this larger loan. So I kinda see both sides of the coin here, right?
Yeah.
And if we, if we're just, cause it's a matter of taking a money and, correct me if I'm wrong here, David, but if we're taking the money right now, we're, we're, we're putting it in a savings account allocated for a specific thing. We can't then spend it on some other shiny thing versus putting it all in a savings account that we can pillage as needed. So there's benefit to putting it all in other envelopes, you know, in the beginning
Yeah.
versus, you know, just having the debit card. So I think it's, do we wanna constrain ourselves on saving or not, because the other question I think is, what's the legal bill? Do we need that debit card to pay the legal bill?
Right, just a little history on this fire situation. We bought a new engine ten, almost fifteen years ago now and we got used to as a city putting fifty thousand on that vehicle, cause that was the payment. And the chief's idea is we started to plan twenty years ahead and we have the document that we wrote for that. It was just a, a plan that we thought, let's just do fifty thousand a year continuously, that everybody shared from the beginning to, to the future and that's what we planned for. And so, you know, and and that's what I, I like that because it gave, it gave us proof for the people that look at us for our equipment value and then, and that it's gonna stand up when it's needed and be new enough to work, they s- they see that and we tell them that, you know, that's what we do and they, and they kind of, they think that's a good way to run a fire department, to be honest with you.
Yeah. So what, do we own the engine that we're gonna have?
We do now and we tried to do that fifty thousand a year, after that was paid off and it's been two or three years now that it's been paid off. And happened to be time to consider getting its, you know, it's, it's had a good life, but you know, there's that time that, that we referenced, that the trucks don't run as well as, as they used to, so so it was time and now it's time and we did order that other one and, and thankfully it'll be here while this one's still operating, so, yeah. And it's just a good habit, I thought, for, for that much each year and then everybody pays for it forever.
And so in, in this budget, we've got the status quo, right, Chris, I mean, we've got the way it's been done historically, so unless there's a strong inclination to change it, we will just keep it that way.
And so we've done this one year, so there's actually fifty thousand in the savings for the fire truck right now, this would, this would put it at a hundred thousand. And then if we did it again for next year, that'd put it at a hundred fifty thousand, so by the time the truck was delivered, we'd have a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars in there.
I'm Dave Ramsey, I like the envelopes, I'm just saying.
Well, I'm not Dave Ramsey, but I like to.
I will also say, I think we haven't done a good enough job as a council and mayor and not blaming any currently present, but just of explaining that this is what we're doing to the citizens. Cause some of the citizens look at our budget and they're like, oh, you're like spending like banshees and, well, okay, but we're saving you know, sixty-five thousand dollars a year, that's a hefty chunk of change and we're saving it for very specific things, it's like, like Ben said, we're not just putting it in a savings account so we can, you know, have it be a slush fund.
No, we're saving money for the future.
And, you know, we, we probably could have done a better job of communicating that. So Chris, if I'm looking at this correctly though, the revised budget has us saving nothing, correct?
Correct.
So we pulled that sixty-five thousand dollars off of our original budget, now it's no longer there and this is also contributing, I'm assuming, to the the lack of need to pull that two hundred plus K out of savings to balance this, correct?
Yeah, so all we'd be doing is we'd put the sixty-five back up there, taking it from savings and then putting it down in these other savings. So it's really still saving the money, but we have to show it coming in, going out.
Okay. We're taking it out of the slush fund, putting it into targeted funds, but if we root this right now, we're not doing it. That's right.
Correct.
Root it as we want.
Yeah, I know, I see the zeros, I get it.
So if you wanna put it back in, that, that.
I just wanna make sure I'm reading the right call.
That's why I said, I'm Dave Ramsey.
I, I, I was miscarried.
So, I think I would prefer to get the envelopes back up, I'd like that change.
I like the envelopes, that's why I said what I said, I'm Dave Ramsey, I want the envelopes.
But we, we, that can be another motion on top of the move the road money to initiate these savings again, if that's what you guys um want to do and I can make those transfers very easy.
Me, but I wanna remove the number, I'm just giving my opinion.
We don't have to agree, I like that.
What?
We don't have to agree, no.
Well, most of us have to agree. And we have a four situation going on. And we have a four situation going on here tonight, so.
Getting ready.
All right, let's let's try to get hurt on here.
Guess guess what? And it's all your fault.
Why not? There are many other things that fall under that category.
I know you want that.
All right, so then then Chris, you're gonna move that over and then when we
We'll we'll make a motion.
Yeah, but so it just as far as the plan, make a motion to put that fifty thousand expense back in as a targeted.
Yep. So these are the line items that we change. We'd add two hundred thousand to this top line and then fifty, four thousand, five thousand, five thousand, one thousand.
Yeah, I've got it.
And then I would zero out the line items in the roads up above the capital and the
Yep.
Okay, moving on to capital projects. Nothing changed on this one. And then going to the the fire and the parks. I'm just gonna skip over those because we'll add those amounts back in, but I do want to go to the roads because it was brought up about Lofer. And you see, this is kind of a more active account. Um, but there's two hundred twenty thousand, two twenty-three in there right now for Lofer Drive. And that's that's been there for a couple of budget cycles now, but that that would need to be like, so that's earmarked for for Corbett. Water. Water's gonna be an interesting one because I I don't know how the weather's been up there. But then we had a recent budget, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for water usage through June thirtieth. We won't know that fully till Patty Earth. Lori bills out in July for June's usage. So we're gonna be close to that seven hundred and forty thousand. Otherwise, nothing too much exciting on there that we haven't already discussed. Is there any questions on the twenty twenty-two budget?
No.
It doesn't look like it.
If if we can do that water impact fee study out of this budget, would that would that be helpful? Uh, wait till next budget cycle?
But I think, is it nine thousand dollars? Because he'll be able to take the money from some grant?
I I don't remember talking about any kind of a grant for the water.
So he's got some something, but um, either way, because the water impact fee has to be done. Way overdue, so the money has to be found. It's not even a question of it. It just has to. So what I would recommend doing is if we didn't have a specific line item, that we would take it out of our um, carryover monies that we've had year to year in savings for water.
Does everybody understand that, what he's talking about? It has to be done.
So like, how how often does it have to be renewed?
Well, it's supposed to be a living document, minimum every five years. And it's been, what, Chris, twenty years?
Uh, I think it might have been done just a little bit sooner, but it's been a long time.
The water impact fee study that LEI did was done in two thousand and two. Since since then, we've done a well impact, we've done a well impact fee, but we didn't have any engineering documentation to support the well impact fee. And so it's it's well overdue. Um, the concern it has for me and I I will probably bring this up again, but uh, Springfield City just got audited by the state. The Utah Valley Home Builders Association and the Utah Home Builders Association are the ones that are pushing to to keep fees in line. It's not a matter of if, but we will be audited. Um, the mayor and Chris and I and Jody are in process of trying to preemptively, you know, do something about that before it happens to try to stay out of trouble. Springfield City ended up hiring or reallocating three employees to satisfy the requirements of their audit. If that happens, that I mean, that gets expensive. And so if we can be a little preemptive, since we do apparently have a little bit of time before it happens to us, um, I think it would just be in our best interest.
And so you're just basically asking if the money's there and Chris, you're saying that it does appear to be so we could take it from this year's budget and and that's still part of the the proposed budget that we've got here before us tonight, right?
Yes, we would just take it from the depreciation expense, this line right here, excuse me, and utilize
We can talk about when it would best be allocated, but it sounds like if we decided we want to take it from this year.
There's probably more money this year, isn't there?
Wouldn't it have to be done by June thirtieth if you put it out of this year?
I mean, if we allocate it, if if we, I mean, you can pay for it upfront. You know, before the engineer gets done and then if there's anything to to settle up at the end, then it's gonna be minimal compared to the estimated cost.
Probably just needs to be contracted. So the money has to be tied up before the thirtieth.
Right, yeah, right.
You don't actually have the right to check.
So because this is all in money. Uh, Mayor, you've you've got the authority to move this money around the hundred and ten thousand to a water impact fee or to the engineering side if council approves the expense over ten thousand dollars. And and to go off impact fees, we might be missing out on some other impact fees, too, like public safety and those kind of things that that Ted's been kind of looking at for us.
Right. Well, and so these are discussions that I was hoping we could have Wednesday. Um, I I I don't, I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to keep it from the council. I just don't know it. It needs to be, because I mean, these are more just strategic decisions as to when, as opposed to how, which it seems that what we're discussing is more for the how, right?
But doesn't that decision have to be made tonight?
No, so we could, no, the mayor's got the authority within the water account because they're all within the same fund to move the money around how he wants to. If we get a bill from XYZ Engineering Company for forty thousand dollars, then we need to come back to council, get their approval on that expense.
But just as an expense, not as a budget approval?
Correct, yeah. See, this one's a little more flexible on this count.
Okay. So in summary, I think we're good, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Okay.
Any other comments on that? Okay, then moving right along, twenty twenty-three proposed fiscal year budget.
Has this changed at all from what was presented before?
No, this this is pretty much still the same, but I can bring it back up just in case. Let me get my new account here. Now, remember, we can change the budget. Everybody, every council meeting, if you guys want. Um, so even though you may not agree with this or you think some things may may need to be changed, that's okay. We we need to look at two options tonight. One is potentially raising the property taxes. And if that is hap, if that's even a potential, then we need to schedule a truth and taxation in August. And right now, the proposal is to take property taxes to eight hundred fifty seven thousand dollars or basically sixty thousand, sixty five thousand dollars higher than this year. Now, the question is, how much is that going to be on each property and all that? It's hard to say today until we get the assessment back. And the state gives us the assessment on all the properties that we currently have. And once that's done in June, then we'll be able to say, okay, on Ben's house, it's gonna equate to a hundred fifty dollars. On Doral's house, it's gonna be ninety-eight dollars. Um, and so forth.
It has to be reversed by the wind now. He doesn't doesn't love to pay more. I was talking about just sheer volume and wealth of of overall. He has it clearly higher.
Oh, how did those truth and taxation meetings usually go?
Oh, very well.
There are lots of
One of my favorite meetings.
Last one went pretty easy.
Well, yeah.
It was a daisy.
Private enterprise, the private enterprise fund is selling pitchforks outside.
Hey, that finds out to be bad about tuition law.
A percent tax increase and a five percent tax increase. So I think most residents would get four percent.
What what's what's the bottom line here? You're saying we probably need to raise sixty or seventy thousand dollars?
To make this current budget work the way it's been presented past couple of meetings, yeah.
Okay.
Now, you have the option to take some out of savings. We have the option to cut expenses. You have the option, you really can't raise the franchiser telecom tax because they're already as high as they can go. So once again, this is, if you're gonna do truth and taxation, this is basically a bridge budget to get us through August. And then in August, depending on your feedback from residents and how you feel, you can vote for a tax increase. We want to put a higher tax increase on the truth and taxation because you can always lower the tax increase that night. You can't increase. And so let's just say we raise it. I I don't have the numbers yet. Let's say it's a point zero five five and you want to raise it. Probably somewhere up point zero five seven. You might want to just say, look, we're looking at point zero six zero. And then calm down off of that. We got caught a couple of years where we thought, ah, we should have had a little bit higher.
So make them a little bit madder and then make them less bad.
Well, I, yeah, that's true. Hey, David did a phenomenal job last year in in advertising and talking about wise. And the year before, we didn't do that and and we got hampered.
So well, if people understood it last year or what we had, but wouldn't it be nice if we could go a year, because I can't remember when, we didn't raise taxes one year, to be honest with you. I don't remember. In my
The first two years that I was on the council.
Say there were two years.
Well.
You have to remember.
Reality is, is costs this year are just higher. Yeah.
I felt like we should have been doing like a three percent, three percent instead of the next year, the third year was the twenty percent. I was like
Mine went up like five hundred or something in the long.
And we we backed off of that. Uh, so that's a good example. It was advertised as a twenty percent increase. And we backed off and I think we ended up with like an eight percent increase, but people the next year were still mad.
They're still mad.
Even though we backed way off of it. So you gotta be careful about advertising too high, even though, anyway, that's what people will remember. They're gonna remember the first number you give them, not the second.
So there was a small increase. And if you look on the screen, everything in red is when there was an increase and everything in black when there was not an increase. You can kind of see from twenty twenty-one all the way down to two thousand eight, kind of what happened with the certified tax rate. Is that big enough for you guys to see?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's perfect.
It's kind of an interesting thing to see.
How come I remember a truth and taxation meeting every year almost?
It was in Toronto.
It is, that's okay. I believe that, okay.
Well, Doral, in two thousand eighteen to seventeen, I don't think this was the case, but there's a, there is a chance that, you know, the council can vote to not do anything with the taxes and just leave it status quo. Um, but I think in these two years, that we just didn't even discuss them. And then you can see by just those two years alone, by not keeping up with inflation, we're still playing catch up potentially today.
One of the things is I think that we've got clear market indications that costs are up, wages are up.
Legal fees are
Yeah, legal and then legal fees are a huge thing this year and next.
Look at this. So this is point zero zero four six. So last year, we were at point zero zero four two. The reason why that matters is our certified tax rate was lower last year than it was back in twenty seventeen. So if you're just paying attention to the certified tax rate, which is really all you should pay attention to, because that's what really matters, we actually had lower taxes. Well, why? Because we have more homes.
And they're valued higher.
And they're valued higher. So we were able to spread it out over more people. And the more homes we build, the further that's gonna go. We're gonna end up with a lower tax rate.
But our taxes aren't lower because they're valued higher.
Yeah, I think people looking, they're looking at what they're paying.
What they're paying. I I and and I understand that.
There's also multiple entities poking a pig. And our residents only blame us for the pain, right? So Nevo's sitting there just
Nevo's school district's building, they're rebuilding Pace in high school right now and
They are, exactly.
They're gonna do Springfield next.
Springfield needs it.
Pace in high needs it.
But they don't need a glass and chrome.
They don't need a corner canyon, right?
They need
They love love.
So
Todd Hall.
But but I guess, you know, again, this this is, this is something, I mean, Chance Williams and I have gone the rounds on this issue. And the reality is, when your city is in growth mode, you will have higher taxes. So the two cities, Waltsburg, at least a couple of years ago, was the number one highest taxes in the state despite the claims that we were. Waltsburg was number one. Why? They're in growth mode, too, and very little retail base. So we have very little retail, we're in growth mode, they're in growth mode, very little retail, same story. Now, fifteen years from now, when we're no longer in growth mode, when we're more built out than we are today, those will come down. And that's that's just kind of the life cycle of this.
I agree with you, Bob.
Disagreeing with Dave or?
No, I agree with Bob. He just said the biggest impact is what county values your homes at.
Oh, right.
But if zero is any indicator, it's not gonna be a good year.
Yeah.
So Chris, I've got a couple of questions for you from an operations standpoint, less of anything else, but for instance, if you go with me to uh, four four one zero point six hundred Streets, Road Fuel and Supplies.
Which year are you mentioning?
My question's a general question um, on multiple different accounts. Basically, you know, like, for instance, another one is four four one zero point six zero six, the Streets General Maintenance. So Corbett requested two hundred seventy-eight thousand. Um, and then we're budget, we're proposing the budget here at eighty-six thousand. My question simply just, you know, what was our process that took us from two seventy-eight to eighty-six?
Two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand of that was for a partial building buildout of a physical building.
Okay, perfect. Let's go with four four one zero seven four zero. So Streets Capital Outlake Equipment. So two sixty-eight to eighteen thousand.
Let me back up. Sorry, that's the one with the the building.
That's the building. Okay, so either one, I just want to make sure that, you know, Corbett requested, I believe, two hundred so if we jump back up to that six oh six.
Yeah.
He requested two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. He's gonna get eighty-six thousand. Is there projects associated with those dollar amounts? Did we cut projects from him or just numbers?
So Corbett, you're gonna have to help me here. I can get the documentation out, but I think you were talking about a rotation of a five or year, seven psych, five to seven year cycle of repaving roads or taring roads, or excuse me, overlay roads. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
And then this was my concern, too, because, you know, the requested is nine seventy-three and what he's getting is four ninety-three. So that's that's a big difference. But I, but the two fifty for the building makes sense.
Yeah, mostly I just want him to know, like, what of his to-do list next year? Which ones got cut and which ones are still there? And does he have the funding to get those done?
Because his are the ones that took the biggest hit, right? Like, everybody else pretty much stayed status quo, but this is the one that kind of got chopped.
Well, or this is the one that got the biggest asks. And so it just depends how you look at it. His his budget by far is the most expensive in the city just by nature of roads.
Yeah.
And my question more just from a, does Corbett know what he's expected and can do next fiscal year with this budget?
Yeah, well, I mean, part of what we're doing is we are having regular or budget meetings as part of our staffings to make sure that these things aren't flushed out properly.
One hundred. I I also want to throw out one one thing. I mean, we set a budget, let's say we even set the full budget that Corbett got everything that he wanted. And then we had a major earthquake that destroyed a third of our roads. Any projects Corbett had planned at that point are gone and we now fix the roads with that money.
For sure, for sure.
So it's, a budget is kind of a, it's a, it's a plan, it's a framework, it's a roadmap, but it is not a defined set of checks that are pre-written.
And just so you know, too, uh, further to what I was saying, I I And just so you know too, uh, further to what I was saying, I, I, cause I, I, I think that it's a very valid point. I don't want anyone to feel, we, everyone has important jobs to do. And I don't want anyone to feel like they've been slighted or that they're getting slighted. And so, that's why we're trying to just have open discussions and make sure that those who view, you know, this is a critical piece of what I am expected to do, make sure they have the money to do it.
But, and, and my question's a general one, I just pick Corbett's because they're the biggest.
Yeah, no, I think it's a fair question.
I just, you know, it's, if the, if a project that's on hit, on his or, or Craig's or anybody's list is, it costs twelve and we said, here's ten.
Right.
It's like, no, let's just cut the whole twelve, if we're gonna cut it, because cutting two grand out of it doesn't. Doesn't help anything. That's my question, predominantly. So, thank you.
You answered mine too, because mine was, you know, what, what was cut from them, so, I think, I think I'm good there too.
That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, maybe let's move on. Okay, item seven, proposed ordinance amendment title one, nine, three of the City of Woodland Hills City Code dealing with record retention. Jody.
Okay, our current ordinance says that we follow the state nineteen ninety, uh, record retention schedule. That nineteen ninety retention schedule has been repealed a number of years ago. We, my proposal is that we just follow the recommendation that is set by the state, uh, retention and archives division. That way, we don't have to change it every time they change theirs.
Good idea.
Perfect, concise, that is a point.
Can she take care of the rest of the voters?
Right, yeah, we can.
You changed something.
I heard it, I heard the R-word.
All right, then, uh, item eight, uh, so we need, we need, and this is, this is on me. We need to, uh, request formal approval of the hearing officers that we have engaged or that we would like to engage. Um, so, um, and I don't know how to pronounce her last name, if it's Huggie or Hughie. But, so, three individuals, like, we discussed, we, we've, uh, interviewed and, uh, we recommend that we hire the following individuals, so Amy Huggie or Hughie. Uh, she was referred to us by, uh, our city attorneys, um, because of her expertise. She's a private practice attorney, serves as a city attorney for a number of municipalities in Weaver and Locks, Albert County. Uh, Judy Lever is a former Salt Lake City Assistant City Attorney. And then Rob Patterson, uh, is also an attorney that works, uh, we were referred to him through Mapleton's or contacts that we have with Mapleton City. Um, and, and we, we, they're all, I believe, very well qualified and, uh,
And is the, is the plan just to kind of rotate through them as we get appeals?
Yeah.
And, as well as their schedule?
Exactly.
Conform with their matches?
And that their price will be the same, so we can.
No, it's, 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 there's, there's some variation in their pricing. Um, you know, we talked about using a flat fee structure. Um, but, uh, no, I mean, you know, they will all come in roughly the same and, and that's a fair point. Um, but, you know, part of it also depends on the amount of time the different appeals take too. So, the hourly rate is something that, um, is not the same across the board. But, just like with any professional, you know, an attorney that has twenty years of experience would likely spend less time evaluating a case than an attorney that has three years of experience. So, the, the billable rates should be commensurate with that level of experience and expertise. So, you know, what the hope is, is that it will all equal out in terms of, you know, the overall cost. I mean, it's not gonna be an exact, you know, not every appeal is going to be the exact same price. Um, but, uh, you know, that's, that's the way it's set up right now.
It just seems like on the front of an appeal, from the reading I've been doing, the, the prices wanted to know, wanted to be known in, in before. Um, I don't see how it can.
No, it, there's.
With what you described.
Yeah, no, it, it's, I mean, some appeals are gonna be massive undertakings, some are gonna be simple decisions, so. Um, you know, that's why we characterize even the fees that we request in advance as a deposit. And if the fees don't add up to the deposit, then the appellant gets a refund. The one thing I also want to avoid though is I don't wanna have to chase down money. So, we wanna make sure that the deposit is sufficient to get us enough to, you know, if you've got an appellant that loses, you know, trying to get them to pay for it would be a much more difficult prospect.
Sorry, but, Chris, we probably need to add both a income and a outgoing line item for this.
Okay.
To the budget.
Do we foresee this happening before June thirtieth?
Yes.
Okay, um, whatever.
You'll have that too, or does, does the thing that had?
But we, we don't have any money currently and.
It's just an empty bucket, both sides.
Yeah, it will, but it, you gotta.
It just needs to be part of it, no, great point.
You gotta track it.
So, that's three amendments to the twenty twenty-two budget then, that need to be considered when we vote on it.
Have they all been tracked to a similar level, like, time?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
You wanna call it hearing officer revenue, or what do you wanna call it?
Uh, yeah.
I think, no, 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 no.
Oh, no.
It should be accord. Sorry, it should be according to, um, this is the, um, it used to be called the variance committee, what was?
Appeals.
Okay.
The Board of Adjustment.
So, Board of, Board of Adjustment hearings.
Well, except now we've called it something different.
There are appeal officer and there are deal, deal with land use and appeals, so they're.
So, should it be, like, Appeal Officer?
How about just appeals, because you're gonna have the same thing with building code, appeals.
Cause we should track the building code ones that are coming in now.
That's simple, I like that.
That's not just appeals, it's also variance requests, we charge a fee.
Now, are we billing people if we lose? Or are we eating that cost? So, if we have screwed up, it's forcing them to make the appeal.
That is a fair point, and, and we talked about it, and that may be what we should do.
I think that makes the most sense from a, a, a justice standpoint.
I agree.
I think it also shows that, hey, you really feel it, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna challenge the ruling that's been made or if we've made an error, you're welcome. Now, here's the, the thing, if we lose, you know, we'll cover the cost, but, you know, it also.
Cover the cost of up to how much though?
Don't you run into an issue where the city thinks you're right, the city thinks it's right, but the hearing officer may rule against you? And just because there's a difference there, I'm not sure that the city should be on the hook for that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and, and, and we've talked about this internally, um, I, I, I am inclined toward your point of view, Ben. I mean, to me, it's something that you could, are you talking that if, if it's appealed to like a district court and then they find, uh, they rule differently, or is it? Cause I mean, it seems to me that the cause should be tied to the specific body that's hearing the appeal.
I think that's a dangerous world. You know, I think it's just for these three people. Like, cause that's what the fees are for, man.
Well, it's.
Their rulings.
Yeah, it would be their, their ruling, yeah, that, we wouldn't take it on.
No, I realize that, but I guess.
With respect to anything at the district court level.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I hear, I hear what you're saying as far as the appeals, the, justice is not always equal. And what do I mean by that? You can have people who can put together the OJ Simpson defense team and they will win. Just because they put together the OJ Simpson defense team.
Yeah.
And even though their cause was not just, but they were able to spend the money to put together the kind of defense team that will win no matter what. Yeah, so.
Looking more for black and white.
There's, there's kind of, so, so I'd be, I mean, you know, again, it's, you were on the variance committee how many years?
Two.
Two. And of those two, the, the first hearings that you held, how long did they take?
Oh, I mean, they were an hour or less, I mean, well, we deliberated for a while, but, I mean, two hours, maybe, two and a half tops, including deliberations.
Okay, and then the last few that you were on?
Oh, I mean, it was, it was.
Unlimited, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, it was almost a full-time job.
Yeah, so, I'm just saying, to make it as black and white as you're proposing, I think would be a mistake. Now, where, where we go there, I don't know, but I think to make it as black and white as you're saying it is just not a good idea.
I, but I do think that that is, I mean, you gotta make the call somewhere, at, at what point who bears the burden of the costs? And, and if you win, then it's on the house. And if you lose, then you're picking up the tab.
Yeah, I don't think you wanna do, it's on the house, maybe, maybe something like.
But if it's on the house, that means that we did get it wrong, at least according to our deal.
All the amount is on the house, you know, so maybe you have a five hundred dollar minimum and then whatever is spent above that. You know, I'm just saying, I, I would, I think we need to investigate this a little bit more and we need to actually kind of think this through.
Oh, we've thought it through.
So that it is fair.
Yeah, no, I agree, we, we've thought it through, uh, and, and, you know, I mean, some of this involves discussions with our city attorneys. And so, I, 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 I do wanna be a little bit cautious in terms of, of discussing it too openly in an open meeting, but.
Do we need to table this for later?
It, it would probably be, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a question of, of a fee structure. And so, it's, it's something that, right now, we're asking for five hundred dollars and, um, yeah, you're right, it, 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 it does need to be addressed. And so, I'll just have to come up with a fee structure that, uh, that takes that into account. But do you approve the individuals?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we're not voting yet.
Well, not, yeah, yeah, but I, any questions on that, I guess, is. Okay.
Glad to have them, actually.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. All right.
Any particular name, or do you just want me to wing it?
Oh, I, I would say Appeal Authority, or, uh,
Appeals.
Appeals and variances, or, something like that, I mean, I, I don't think it needs to be.
Yeah, I, I would agree with something like that. Again, the objective is just to have a name that's clear, says that's what that is for.
Yeah. Okay, um, Deputy Dudson is gonna give us a presentation.
I'll give you some stats real quick.
Okay, perfect.
So, for, uh, April, uh, we had twenty-two calls that came in through the public, they called, uh, public-generated details. Um, we had five information details come in, so it's just citizens calling in, usually just asking information regarding, uh, law enforcement questions. Um, we had two animal complaints, um, an agency assist, citizen contact, um, a disturbance call, one domestic violence. Uh, a couple of follow-ups, um, a couple of medical calls, um, a threatening suicide call and two welfare calls that came in through the public. Uh, generated by the deputies was, uh, twenty-nine. And some of those, uh, extra patrols, uh, twenty-two extra patrols, three citizen contacts, one suspicious, and a couple of vet inspections. So, those were stats for April this year. And then, um.
Deputy, sorry?
Yes.
What's the definition of a welfare call?
So, that's where someone, usually it's where someone can't get a hold of somebody and they're curious to make sure that they're alive and well. Um, sometimes we also have, um, like a child custody type situation going on. And one parent wants to make sure that the kids are being taken care of, and so we will go and check, something like that. Doesn't give us the right to walk in the house on those type of situations, but our goal is to make sure the children are, are being taken care of, so. Um, Mayor, I believe, uh, my lieutenant's probably gonna reach out with you next week about the, the contract. The proposed budget for, uh, the sheriff's office is right on with what the contract, uh, update will be.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll reach out with you this week. They had to go through the process of, uh, the county attorney's office to approve that, and then the commissioners had to approve it. And they finally got it, so I believe that's gonna be, uh, we'll, we'll make contact with you next week for you to review it.
All right, very good.
What was the other thing?
I got one for you, Ben, I'll let you.
Okay.
Just, uh, we've had a few citizens that live around the park that have been requesting extra patrols and extra dry pies. They're seeing increased activity at the park now that it's getting warm. And just wanted, they asked me to ask you if you could do some increase.
Yes, yep, we'll, we'll put some extra patrols. That was the other thing is, we've also, um, with working with the ordinances that we're trying to push through, so we as sheriff deputies can give a citation if needed or whatever else, uh, enforcement that needs to take place. Those ordinances have been pushed through to the city attorneys, your city attorney, to, to make sure it legally reads the way it needs to. And there's a fee schedule, uh, we added a couple of things that didn't have fee schedules on those. So, by the state, we have to have a, a current fee schedule, a definition of the ordinance, uh, on there. And, um, so, Jody's been working with, with me on that, and so hopefully, once your city attorney approves that, it will come to the city council for approval on those ordinances, so. And the parking one is one, we broke it down, cause it, there was, parking was pretty much under snowplow, was it under snowplow? So, we moved it to make it towards its own little thing, I think we just put out a parking violation or? So, it, it reads better, um, especially for deputies that were, that would search in, uh, Woodland Hills, uh, codes. It would pull up and it would say parking violation instead of snowplow violation, which it was under, so we kinda broke that out a little bit, so. But we, I'm leaving it in the city attorney's, uh, hands for the legal write-up on it. I started looking at it, I was like, Jody, I think we maybe should have the city attorney look at this one stuff.
Yeah, we just have it on parking and city roads, we haven't identified where it should be, but we have identified, uh, city code violation fee schedule that they need to look at, so.
And then, uh, I'm going to do a little demonstration with my bomb dog. I did one a little bit earlier and the way I was like, hey, can you do that for the city council?
It's worth seeing.
So, I'm going to grab, so Jack, my dog, is trained on twenty-four bomb odors. Um, there are twenty-six bomb odors that usually, that most, uh, bomb dogs are trained on. Um, two of those odors we can't have. And tomorrow, I take Jack for two days with the FBI and the ATF in Salt Lake. And we get to train on those odors, but we don't get to keep them, cause they're very, very, uh, dangerous. They, they can make, mix the chemicals, mix the, make the, the odor for us, but they have to detonate it in the same location that they make it, so. Super, super dangerous stuff. Um, but, uh, Jack, he, uh, I'll bring him in. If you have any food in your bags, just zip it up. And does anybody wanna volunteer their bag if they don't have any food in it? If you have a bag?
I, I will.
You wanna volunteer your orders? Okay, I'm gonna put the odor in it.
I'll take a different bag to the airport.
The odor, I'm gonna, you, I'll go grab it and then I'll bring Jack in, but it's, uh, what would we call it, defuse.
You don't like teeth marks on your bag, do you?
You say teeth marks?
Or on your leg.
Yeah, this is breaking soft work when he goes to somebody else's bag.
Yeah, I know, but this was very.
Mine, I've got all the bags.
I've got my photo of my dinner.
The odor would stay in there. Well, I'd like it, yeah, the trouble.
Uh, just leave it right there, right there.
Okay, okay.
I'm like sipping it on the floor.
Yeah.
Well, it's just.
So, this is defuse, there's a couple different types of fuse, there's tie fuse, which, you know, it's a, some bison that's gonna take an hour for it to get to its destination. This is defuse, this is usually, if you see, like in the cartoons where they pull the box handle, boom, that's, it would travel through this, so.
Wow, put it wherever you want.
So, that's not necessarily an explosive. So, that's not necessarily explosive, but he can find it because it's typically associated with him?
Yes.
Do you smell it first, let's see?
Most of these, yeah, most of these orders, there's not, there's not much for us as humans.
I can smell that. It's just a slight gunpowder smell. But the most amazing thing.
You need a job?
I was, no. I was in Australia, uh, going through airport security, and their x-ray was down. And so, they just had us line up, and they had a dog.
Oh, Jack did.
And the dog, the dog, uh, some lady had, was trying to bring in, um, just some cookies.
No kidding?
Yeah, and the dog just, ch, right there.
So, watch this. This dog is, this dog is trained to not paw what he finds, because that's dangerous. So, when you see him recognize this thing, he just stops immediately and looks at the deputy, and he did it twice.
He just learns, huh?
Yeah, and you know, when he, when he's trying to tell a deputy. And then the reward is this toy, and the dog goes nuts with the toy. I hope, I hope he doesn't get it.
Now, isn't this a relatively new dog?
Yeah.
So, it's still in training?
Yeah.
That's cool.
He's a sweet.
But he's.
Amazing. How smart they are.
That's a real trick to train them.
It's roasty in here, Mr. E. Yeah, he's gonna claw it to, to down the.
I was, I was gonna ask if they were saving money.
He's talking the way that.
Yeah, okay.
For the budget.
Our council doesn't give any air.
Or any padded seats either, maybe.
But look at it this way, you don't have to go to a sauna to lose weight.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't wear on Carrie's chair, she's not here. Little new chairs are better.
I think we can all just lose weight through stress.
We'll read those emails by Zach all the time.
Okay, so for Jack, this is, and just like any other dog, for whatever purpose, from drugs to cadaver dogs, they get rewarded. And so, but then it's a game. So, he finds the odor, he gets his toy. That's pretty much what it is, so. So, just like humans, sometimes they wanna work, sometimes they don't, so. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna let him off, I'll give him a keyword, and his goal is to search.
Search layer.
There's lots of things to smell.
So, different than, than fifty, fifty patrol.
Corbin's probably good, okay. I've got smells on me, too.
He's terrible. So, he's come over here a couple times, so then what we do is a detail. So, we'll come back when.
How many smells you got?
I probably have a madhouse for you. Because it was in a bottle, we're gonna. Catch.
And it could be the way that it's, the air is flowing, it'll get this, uh, first he, he did a really good on another one.
Oh, God.
I kinda hit it. It's a little bit deeper in that bag. If I tell the detail, he'll. And that's his, his.
Oh, yeah, he's looking at it now. You know it. You know it.
Well, so I'm watching, because when he came up, I don't know if you guys saw, he came back a second time with the flags, and that's where the odor's coming up, they're going out. Then he'll go back. So, that's.
So, he's, he's trained as, is it just bomb sniffing that he's been trained for?
So, last week, his second specialty would be tracking people. So, like, uh, suspects, missing children, uh, autism children, or people. Um, and so, that's gonna be a little bit more challenging for him, and they told me it'll probably take a good six months, uh, to really get him tuned in on that, because outside, his distraction is birds. And so, his only way he gets food now is he has to track my kids or someone else, so I have to do that for six months, and they said that should take away the bird instinct from him, so. So, every, every morning, every night, I have to go have my kids go hide in the park somewhere like that to see if he can find them.
And then, and then what do you do? Just, uh, like in the movies, you see him take a shirk or something with their scent, and then.
Yep, and drop it, have him hopefully get that. The thing is, is if he doesn't get it, and he gets an attack from the birds, he doesn't get any food for the, for the morning or night. So, he's, he's done good so far. He's realizing, wait a minute, if I wanna eat, I gotta find this person.
Focus.
So, his reward for the bomb, uh, stuff is a toy. His reward for finding people is food, so. There's a little demo, but we did a lot with Jack, so.
Thank you.
There were more training than I thought there would be, or more work, so. Jack, here, Jack, here, come on. And his obedience wasn't. He's like, where's that? I want, I want the toy.
Hey, go through an election, you can sit here.
Give your toy. Give your toy.
He's so excited.
He's more excited to go back out there and see the birds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He was so thorough.
Yeah.
Did every little criss and cranny except for that one.
Way there.
He did a really good job.
Is it still in there?
No, I gave it to him.
Okay.
And he got it.
He's going to the.
I need some debt toward it.
Yeah, no kidding, you might get sent to, to an airport.
I'm gonna use a different bag now.
I know, I'm like, I do use that bag when I go to the airport, so.
All right, Corbin.
Uh, Public Works update, you've probably seen the crews doing the crack, the crack fill. We only got half of the tar that, uh, that we ordered. They're hoping to get it before the end of fiscal year. They'll at least bill us for the rest of the tar before the end of fiscal year if they can't get it, but, um, they're just working on it. As soon as they can get the, the, uh, patch crew, it's a different crew that does patching as opposed to crack fill. So, as soon as they get the patch crew, ca, patch crew loose, they'll come and do roughly about twenty passes along Woodland Hills Drive. Mostly, they're all on Woodland Hills Drive, the patch on Summit Creek Drive right in front of the, the South Gate. They'll take care of that, and.
They're gonna take the one in Maple.
There's a huge one in front of somebody's driveway.
No, that's the contractor.
Okay.
That's the one on, like, fifty East Maple. Fifty or seventy. Jody, what is it? I think it's fifty or seventy.
Is it the other's his house?
No, it's the.
But that's, I mean, Van Con is, is, got that one, and then they're gonna do a little, do a little bit of overlay on the worst of it, uh, the worst of Woodland Hills Drive down in front of Toby's house before you get to West Loaf. So, it's moving along.
How big of an overlay is gonna go there?
Ninety-five hundred square feet. N- ninety-five hundred and something.
So, is it basically just a really bad patch in front of Toad, out of Todd's?
Todd and Toby.
Yeah.
I see, yeah.
Because I spared you all a nasty ground email from one of the residents there, and he wanted me to forward it to you, but I just, I can't, what's the point? But he's basically complaining about Woodland Hills Drive being a roller coaster through there. I'm like, yeah, I know.
The same one that claims that you can get airborne?
Yeah.
You know, only if you're driving sixty, but whatever.
Yeah, we should remind him that it's twenty-five.
But, yeah, there's, I think it was actually nine, ninety-five hundred and thirty-eight square feet of overlay, and then the rest is, is patches. Not, not much of an update on the well. Every chance I get, I, I work on the well. You know, it's just a work in progress. Obviously, it's running and working, and nothing, nothing that still needs to be done is critical as far as operational, but it still needs to be done, so. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Um, Craig is working on, the, Craig's got the, got, uh, the solid waste history, bringing dumpsters up to get rid of all of the stumps up at the tanks. So, as soon as Michael and Zach have been running the mini X and loading stumps, as soon as they get the dumpster filled, then Craig has it, has an empty one brought back up, and the full one is taken off. So, it's a work in progress also. I know the stumps and, uh, fire mitigation has, has been an issue, but it's, it's a work in progress also. But Craig's taking care of that, and it's moving along.
Yeah, try to, step at a time.
Yeah.
Thanks.
The crew that's been working, they really cleared a lot of, a lot of brush. They did a good job. There's a lot.
And I think they saw their back this morning.
They are.
Yeah, they got home Sunday, um, and then they, they worked on the truck on Monday, and then they did, they did some wood on Monday, and then, um, they set up by the switchbacks, there is, uh, some wood. If you need more to, if you have a fireplace and you need more logs to burn, uh, they did say, you know, you can come and get them. Chief said, anyone that wants to come and get firewood, it's up there. There's some cut up.
And as the, as the guys are, are loading stumps, they're sorting through that stuff to make it easier for people to get, and we gotta get through it anyways. And so, as they come to stumps and, and trunk, tree trunks that have been cut, they're, they're gonna pile those off to the side, hopefully make it easier for people to come and get so that they will. But they've gotta be able to get through that anyways to be able to load the stumps that are, that are already pulled, and to be able to pull more stumps as they go through it, so, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a work in progress.
All right, uh, Councilmember Hilliard, a little words, Rhodes?
Well, we haven't met, and Corbin just went over everything.
Okay, nothing to, nothing to add on that one. Perfect. Councilmember Kinniston, public safety.
All right, um, you're tired of me talking about this video that went out, but it's published officially on the site for the Colorado meetings, and, um, and what an interesting experience to, to look at our city from the, from the view of, what are we, what do we do here? What makes us unique, or what are we proud of? And I wanna tell you, we have a lot of material to choose from, and we tried to put as much as we could into five minutes, and we did, so, but you know, there's chipping pile, and these are the things that this group really wants to know, how do we do it, so that we can share with others how they do it, and they'll share with us the problems we have. And we have some issues, too, that we need to learn from them. But we've got chipping fire piles, we have the expo, we have three firefighters headed off to Colorado, which is really cool, because that's where the meetings are. That was just perfect, Mayor, what you said there. And I'm so grateful. I pulled my phone out last minute and just videoed you while you were doing that. And if you haven't listened to his speech, I, I keep listening to it, because there's a message there. Um, we have a healthy fire department. We have sirens in our city that we've put in. That, that, that's incredible, yeah. And, and we also have a mitigation pond up there, and, and all of this is part of what we do and what we're thinking of in our city. So, so it was really, really enjoyable to, to see all the great things we do. I'll, I'll tell you, Provo turned in their video first, and it is a lady standing in one position, talking for four and a half minutes. And, and she had things to say that they're doing. They're chipping one little area over in the east that you're Provo, but, but we wanted to show active things that, that are going on, and, and I don't know what they wanted, but, um, I just appreciate being in a city that has so many good things, uh, that we can, we can talk about and show, so. Public safety, that's all I really have. It was cool that we had chipping piles everywhere, so we got videos of that, and, and we should start, start chipping a week from today. And if they don't, you're probably going to see fire department members running the chipper. I hope not. That's really hard work. So, I'll invite Ben and all the other strong council people, Dan, to come load the chipper. That is really.
I have done a chipper before, and you know what? You can have it. Hard work, but it's also dusty and.
It's killer, it's a killer.
Yeah, you go home, we drive.
Yeah, it's, so, I was trying to spare a day of my friend from any problem. Um, no, we'll take all that we can get. So, that's all I can.
Thanks, Earl, and then thanks for the work on that video. Your son's a heck of a cinematographer. Does he have a drone?
Uh, several, yeah, and he's a good pilot, too, that helps.
Yeah, that's really cool. Okay, Councilmember Lund.
All right, um, for Woodland Hills Days, we have Dan and Bonnie Roden, who are going to be the chairs, and then Vish and Mariette Vishon said are staying on as past chairs, and we're meeting this Thursday to decide which events we wanna do. We have names for all the subcommittees, but we wanna, Dan Roden would like to get rid of a few things and maybe add a few different things, so we're gonna talk about that. If there's anything we absolutely can't get rid of, speak now or forever hold your peace. I know, the breakfast and the, that's not gonna, it's more like the pie eating contest, some of the little things that we were probably not going to do again, so.
It was really fun to watch, though.
I know.
But, um. We should be sure to touch base with fire department with ideas that we have for bringing in search and rescue and so on. They have some amazing equipment, if you want.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I'd like to add things, so Dan, I will debate that, so, I really like to.
And hon, honestly, change is good. So, I, I mean, I think you guys are super creative, and whatever, whatever you come up with, it'll be fun.
Last year was a little bit minimal, because it was, uh, people that were supposed to be the chairs backed out at the last minute, and so, Mariette and, and Vish stepped in at the last minute, and then I offered to help them, um, because Mariette seemed a little overwhelmed. And so, um, anyway, but I, I would like to add, too, and have two more things than what we did last year. So, that's that. And then, for volunteers, I'm also over volunteers, which is kind of hard. So, I got this email, um, over the weekend. So, uh, Greg Witt would like to finish the split rail fencing this Saturday, May twenty-eighth, which is Memorial Weekend. And they have a skid steer and an auger, and they need a crew of four to six workers to start at nine AM. He thinks they'll be done by two. Um, he sent it to Carrie and Chloe to announce it. I, you know, there wasn't a newsletter this week, which is understandable. So, when I get home tonight, or first thing in the morning, I'll post it on our page, but I can't put it on the main page, so I'll poke Carrie. Or, um, who else has access to the main page?
I do. I just am, I'll give it a go. I, I've never actually authorized anybody to post something, but, uh, I do have that authority, so.
Because I just wanna.
He should be able to post, and then he just has to approve.
So, just text him when you put it up, and then I'll approve it.
Okay. Um, I just wanna get it out there, and I, and Carrie always talks about making sure you start it on the main page and then share it to the community page, so I wanna make sure I do it in the right way.
Look, what we've, I think we shifted a little bit and have Mike share it.
Okay.
He'll go on and then pull it to his page.
Okay. All right, so, um, if any of you, I will be gone this weekend. Anyone gonna be here? Um, it would be nice if.
Well, you're not strong, so.
The things we learned.
Oh, hi. If there's anybody that wants to volunteer to help make sure there's volunteers, that would be fantastic. We are going to Idaho to our property up there because we, we have some issues and we've got to, we've got to go to work. We're gonna be working on my fourth job. Um, so anybody gonna be around? Okay. Nobody's gonna be here. Ben, are you in town?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
Let me see if I can't figure something out.
Okay.
I can't be able to plan something.
Right. Give me a minute or two.
And if Javon's not on a fire, he'll be here. So I can volunteer him. He can't go with us because he could get, they could get called out. So he can't leave town. So he'll be here alone. So, and he's always happy to help. So that could be one volunteer, as long as they don't get called out. So, um, we'll do that. And then, um, Parks, Trails and Rec, we voted on our co-chairs. So it's Sherry Berger and Brad Provo. I can never say his last name.
You said it right.
And then Michelle Crump is the secretary. That's a two-year term. We voted on that because we finally had an executive board. It was a good meeting. Um, I felt like there was a lot more meeting in the middle than maybe there has been in the past. And that's why there hasn't been progress.
Yeah.
It was phenomenal.
And I love that the two co-chairs are about as opposite as can be.
Do those need to be presented to the council for approval? The chair?
No, just the executive board. Which we voted on. So then, uh, then we, um, we picked the co-chairs, yeah. Um, and then just my last thing, because we were there on Monday, we were at the park on Monday looking at pickleball and at, um, the park looks terrible. It needs mowed, needs some love.
I know, I know. Craig told me this morning, he's got it on, he's got it on his schedule.
Okay. I, I, um, wanted to come by this morning, but I wasn't able to.
Weed and feed and lower.
It's, the grass is like, it's tall. But we've had some crazy, yes, we, in some spots, but we've had some crazy weather.
There's no hyperbole there. I'm serious. But it is, it's folding over and you could part it and you could braid it and.
It's tall. It needs some love. It's, it's a little neglected.
Our whole slew of goats or something.
Anyway, that's all I got. I've been busy. It's been busy too.
Great. Thank you. Okay, uh, Councilmember Pratt?
Okay, really quick. So, um, Sumo has a meeting on Thursday. Um, I think it's just, it's only a half an hour, so it'll be quick. And then Finance Committee, we haven't met. So, we're good.
All right, very good. Thank you. And for me, personality-wise, I don't really have anything to report other than some of the things are already discussed. Everyone's just fighting the good fight. So hang in there, you guys, hopefully. Okay.
Okay.
Then let's, uh, take a little break and.
Do you want to do possible items for our agenda?
What was that?
Do you want to do a possible items for our agenda?
Oh. Oh, and from the first memory, what, what did we talk about on that? Um, we talked about something today and. So I, I, well, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if, if it comes to me, I'll just have to put it on the next agenda as a proposed item. So does anybody else have anything that they want to, uh, have brought up? All right. Then with that, let's reconvene at eight and, uh, call the council meeting of order.
I'll run home to the show.
Yeah, that's a pretty good idea. Okay, uh, Councilmember Pratt?
Okay, really quick. So, um, Sumo has a meeting on Thursday. Um, I think it's just, it's only a half an hour, so it'll be quick. And then Finance Committee, we haven't met. We're good.
All right, very good. Thank you. And, uh, for me, personality-wise, I don't really have anything to report other than some of the things are already discussed. Everyone's just fighting the good fight. So hang in there, you guys, hopefully. Okay. Then let's, uh, take a little break and.
Do you want to do a possible items for our agenda?
What was that?
Do you want to do a possible items for our agenda?
Oh, and from the first memory, what, what did we talk about on that? Um, we talked about something today and. So I, I, well, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if, if it comes to me, I'll just have to put it on the next agenda as a proposed item. So does anybody else have anything that they want to, uh, have brought up? Okay, all right. Then with that, let's reconvene at eight and, uh, call the council meeting of order.
I'll run home to the show.
Yeah, that's a pretty good idea.
I have pictures, I have pictures of how we snowed.
We live, Joey?
You're live.
Okay, all right. Um, sorry, I was, uh, talking taxes with... So we'll call the council meeting of order, um, and we will have a pledge by council member Pratt and an invocation by council member Chris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to see you being to pause and thank you for our many blessings and for the opportunity for me to have to live in such a beautiful place. We ask you to bless us to make decisions that will help our city, help our residents and to build a better city as, as we work toward the future. We ask you to help us do the right things in the challenges before us and bless those citizens in our city that need special help or are going through hardships, that they'll be blessed. We are grateful for our mayor and for the time he spends in our behalf. And we ask thee to be with us as we discuss many things that are before us and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, the public comment portion, limited to two minutes or less. Comments submitted via email need to be received prior to 3:00 P.M. Today of the meeting, to be included as part of the official record, email comments may not be read aloud during the meeting, but will be distributed to the council, including the official record. All right. Any public comments from anybody here or online? Okay, I, uh, actually would like to, uh, read the public comment by Megan Fugit because I think it mischaracterizes a few things that I would like to set straight. So, her comment is, "We respectfully ask that the following be read and included as part of the public record of the city council meeting on May 24, 2022. We hereby publicly restate our invitation to the city to enter into a mediation to resolve and settle the legal matters presently facing the city in which we are involved. To date, the city has refused. Per proper protocol, this mediation should be held under rule 40A protection to the mutual benefit of all parties. That is the best way for us to meet and begin to work out a settlement resolution. Contrary to statements made by city officials, mediation can and does occur in the midst of legal actions in order to resolve those legal matters outside of court. In fact, that is often the best time for mediation. Again, to date, the city has made no offer to mediate a resolution of our issues and has not responded to any of our many offers to mediate. Although some campaigned on the idea of working to mediate a resolution, no action has been taken. On October 26, 2021, the city attorney stated, 'There's nothing wrong with mediation. I've used it many times. I'm a big proponent of mediation. I'm happy to use it in this situation. In fact, I'm getting ready to respond to a request for mediation, which, if I hadn't been so busy with my other clients and doing other things, I would have responded by now. But I am happy to do that. I'd love to get this thing over with.' To which Mayor Prey started, stated, 'You recommended mediation recently and we were on board, so if you could get that arranged.' Close quote. However, the city attorney has taken no such act, no such action. Perhaps the only persons financially benefiting by these legal battles are the attorneys. The city could avoid the cost of plunging deeper into this long-term legal quagmire by choosing to accept our repeated invitations for mediation.' And that's the end of their statement. And the reason I wanted to read it is because it is, in my opinion, a blatant mischaracterization of the situation. Uh, I have, and, and anyone who cares to, uh, read the emails that I've extended to the Fuges, uh, time and time again. It's a fundamental legal principle that you cannot mediate when you don't know the issues. And I have repeatedly asked the Fuges to identify the issues. And it's not a difficult exercise. You identify where you think the city got it wrong and you identify why we think we got it wrong in a very simple, concise way. And if you feel you've been damaged by it, you identify that. And if we had a list of that, we would be able to simply address each of those concerns. But what we have instead, with every, uh, every email that I've sent to the Fuges, I get, uh, see our previous engineering statement, see back to what we've already said. In fact, if anyone's refusing mediation, if anyone is refusing to frame the issues, it's the Fuges. And so I, when I saw that, and since that's going to be part of the public record, I wasn't going to just stand by and let that characterization of events go unchallenged. So, I would allow anyone to, uh, read the email exchanges that we've had with the Fuges. Um, it, it may be something that has to be requested through grandma, but, uh, to the extent it doesn't, you're welcome to see them. Um, there might be a way that we can even distribute them. But, uh, this is not the city that is interfering with getting this resolved. The city is playing defense, that's all we're doing. And if there is an aggressor in this party or in this dispute, it's the Fuges. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that point on the record too. Ben?
Unless you would like to, to comment, Doro. Doro reached out to me and we, Doro took the spearhead on this, but we reached out also to the Fuges this week, or last week, requesting the ability to speak with them and to hear more of their side of the story, to, to which we have not heard a reply.
Yeah, I, I mean, it makes a sympathetic email, but it's not the truth. All right. With that, we'll move on. Uh, and there being no further comments?
I was just going to say, I have rejected emails and you have made a big attempt to reach out to them. I've read them and they just come back with, they don't even answer any of your questions, they just come back like making accusations and, and things like that, but they don't, they don't address or answer any of the questions that you've asked them, so...
Yeah, and as far as mediation, all of us would love to see this thing through. All of us would love to have this over, but it would be absurd to think that you can mediate when the issues aren't clearly framed. And it wouldn't be that hard of an exercise if resolution was the objective.
I'd like to make public, if you will, the email I sent to them because I, I take it personally that someone in our city won't talk to me just because I'm sitting in this chair, I guess. I don't know why they won't. But anyway, I, I'd love to meeting with Maurice, I'd love meeting with the Brockbakes. I'd like meeting citizens that might think differently than I do. And, and let me just read my simple email to them. Dear Megan and Tannen, I felt guilty for years having met you. And, and that's awful, but I've been in this position all these years and never even met them. I would ask, I would like to ask, if you'd be willing, to spend a few minutes meeting with Ben Hilliard and myself. I don't plan on us solving anything, but I'd like to meet and say hi at least. Let me know if we could come to your home and have a short visit, thank you very much. And, and crickets, I don't get, I don't get any response. And I just want the public to know that we feel like our hearts and desires are in the right place. And I know yours is. And, and I just, I just want to move forward into some, something that's productive, put it that way.
Amen. Okay, thank you. All right, well, there being no further public comment, we'll close that portion of the meeting and, uh, begin the, uh, business and discussion. So, item fourteen, ordinance amending the 2022 fiscal year budget as per our earlier conversation with the three revisions that we discussed.
I'd like to make a motion that we move, um, the, the funds for the roads, the 29,000 and the 171,600, so that they can be used into the capital, is that where it is?
Roads capital.
Roads capital.
Expense.
Expense account. Anyone can, anybody?
Is that the only adjustment on that one? We were also going to make, we were also going to move...
I was just going to do the one, would you want to do them all together?
Yeah, we, we probably should just do one motion.
Kevin, you make it.
That includes all the modifications, no, I thought you were doing great though.
Then you make it, I was just wanted to make sure on that one.
Wait, can I make an amendment? So, in addition to what you just said, also reinstate the savings into savings accounts for each of the different categories. And I think that's it.
There was one.
And add the two appeal line items.
Oh, yeah, and add the two appeal officer line items.
The ones that were going in and the ones that were going out.
Right, right. One going in, one going out.
You got a lot, Joey? Okay.
Did we miss anything?
Can we tie a dollar amount to that?
We did write the list, your recorder. What, Chris?
We put a, on the appeals variance, can we put a thousand in and a thousand out, or something like that?
Do we need, we need to...
Wait, we gotta tie it up?
We, we will need it, so if that's what you feel is the most appropriate, I, I understand.
We do need to tie dollar amounts to it, so whatever you guys feel.
Okay.
So I will amend your amendment to put a thousand in and then move the thousand out.
Okay.
Of the appeals variance.
Well, I think what we would need to do is we would need to start the budget item with a thousand dollars. We wouldn't have anything on the income yet, that would be determined.
We do.
We, what?
We've taken two checks, but why a hundred dollars doesn't posit?
Oh, okay, okay, but that's, that doesn't need to be put as part of the amendment, we would just, that would just be the category they would go into, so...
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll start it.
Uh, let's see.
Roll call.
Okay, that's roll call, thank you. Uh, council member Hilliard?
Hi.
Council member Pratt?
Yes.
Council member Kinnison?
Yes.
Council member Lund?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion carried. Um, item fifteen, ordinance adopting the 2023 proposed fiscal year budget.
Now, I have a question about this. Because if we adopt this budget, we're also adopting a, as Chris mentioned, temporarily adopting a tax increase, which means we need to schedule a treatment taxation here. So we...
And I was anticipating that, so...
Okay, so that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that that was out, let me know that that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And are there any amendments that we needed to make to this one? I know we did in the water fund.
He said we didn't have to do a motion for that, though.
Yeah, we would need to also add those two line items as well.
Two line items, and the other question is, do we also do the savings like we did?
Oh.
Which, we eliminated the savings from our, from our budget.
I think, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there, I, I'm not...
I'm in favor of that, I mean, I, we, we, we would have, we still, I mean, so that would just, yeah, I, I'm in favor of that.
So either, because we weren't taking any out of savings or not very much, that would either come from savings or, or the tax increase, right? But we're not necessarily, do we have to decide?
It does have to be balanced.
Yes, I know, I'm aware. So, but will we, so would we take it from taxes?
So we have to take it from somewhere.
Yeah.
So right now, as I understand it, it is balanced with the tax increase. So we probably have to take it out of savings.
But since we're not taking the, what we had budgeted for out of savings, it would be okay. Because we're not taking it for 2022.
That's right, yeah.
Because we were going to take that 273 or whatever, but now we're not. So it would be okay.
Well, we're taking some of it from 2022, remember that was part of the...
Yeah, the, the savings. But still, we'd still be ahead, is what I'm trying to get to, right? Because we're still not taking the whole.
Yeah.
Because Chris had advised in a prior meeting that because we for 2022 had that 273, that we didn't want to dip into that again. So, as long as we're below that number, I'm finally taking it out of savings.
And to your point, there's a really fair possibility, I'm not going to say good, because you never know. But again, it could end up like this year did, where our revenues were a little bit higher and we didn't end up needing to actually take it out of savings.
Right.
So, we could end up that way. Now, the alternative is also true. Our revenues could be lower and a recession could hit, and it could hit all of us really hard. And then, then we have the inverse problem, so...
That's why I like the cushion, that's why.
The budget is, it's, like I said, it's a framework, it's not necessarily, necessarily written checks.
So, Chris, with that, with that proposal, we're still balanced, right?
Yeah. Give me, give me just, just a second, I'm inputting everything in now, so... If, oh, excuse me, yes, we are balanced, we take it out of the savings, that's 65,000 for the transfers. And then we'll do a thousand for variance in and out, is that, if I was following, right? Yes, sorry, yes, you do balance at that point.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 budget with the changes of moving the, uh, transfers back the way they, the way they were originally in the budget and then adding the two line items for the, um,
Appeals.
Appeals authority for both the income side and the expense side. I'll second what you said.
Okay, we have a, a motion by council member Pratt and a second by council member Kinnison. Council member Hilliard?
Yes.
Council member Pratt?
Yes.
Council member Kinnison?
Yes.
Council member Lund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, item sixteen, ordinance amending Title 193 of the City of Woodland City Code, dealing with records retention.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Hilliard, second by council member Pratt. We'll go this way, council member Lund?
Yes.
Council member Kinnison?
Yes.
Council member Pratt?
Yes.
Council member Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item seventeen, resolution adopting the March 2022 check approvals.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Pratt, second by council member Lund, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item eighteen, appointment of the hearing officers as previously presented.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by council member Lund, second by council member Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. I was not intending to go into a closed session, so unless someone feels strongly, uh, to do otherwise, I would propose that we, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by council member Pratt?
I'll second it.
Second by council member Kinnison, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I have to wait for him to second something.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
I don't need to second, really.
You've got the record, mayor.
Was that? Is it? Wow, okay, well, still eight twenty-one. Seeing that Jody was eating a protein bar, they covered three meals, I figured we need to get her home.